Let's call a meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Legions. A pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First up, we have the approval of minutes for the July 11th, 2023 special meeting, the July 11th, 2023 work session and regular meeting, and the July 24th, 2023 special meeting. I get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Is there any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay. So, all right, so first up, we have the presentation of the civilian service award. We have dispatcher Seaman. Let the chief get up here and, I guess, explain what this is all about.
Yeah, sure. So dispatcher Seaman, or JT as we all call him, know him, he has served this community which he has called home, but he's been with us for 26 years as a dispatcher. When I started with the department 17 years ago, he was one of the people that taught me how to initially become a dispatcher. Over the years, JT has made himself available more than any other dispatcher I can recall, often working entire weekends when no other dispatch officers were available. On July 9th, 2023, JT was working the evening shift when an unprecedented brainstorm descended upon our town. I don't need to remind everyone of the amount of damage that occurred to the town's roadways, infrastructure, flooding of our neighbors' homes, and the vehicles that became stranded in floodwaters. Luckily, they had somebody to call. And all they did, between 3:00 PM and 10:00 PM on July 9th, dispatcher Seaman answered 266 phone calls, answered or made 242 police radio transmissions, and that's not including EMS and fire, which I didn't have a way to tabulate, but was often even a busier channel than the police. He did all of this while floodwater started entering the communications room and threatened to destroy several of our computers which would have shut down our entire communication system. Thanks to his quick actions and moving some stuff around, putting computers on cardboard and what have you, none of the computers ended up getting damaged. The floor is another thing entirely. But when the rain finally did slow, calls continued to pour into dispatch, and I was there and witnessed firsthand how we continued to treat each caller with empathy, respect, and patience. Dispatcher Seaman, for your exemplary service to the town of Cornwall over the past 26 years, and particularly your actions on July 9th, 2023, I would like to present you with our department's civilian service.
That's a, you know, really a great story. I'm really glad you brought that to our attention, Chief.
Sure.
You know, there was, you know, I was still dealing, you know, with the effects from the July 9th storm, and it's good to every now and again, you know, hear some, you know, good story from that day, so thank you. So next up, we have the resolution for the proposed local law zoning change for Vet Rep Theater at One Angola Road. And as you may, as you may recall, we had started this process where the town board had to introduce the local law, then it got referred to the planning board. They had to do seeker, they had to do some stuff with the site plan review. Then they got through the seeker process, then there was a negative declaration, right? Then it got referred back to the town board, and now we're able to finally pass the zoning change, and they will be allowed to, you know, continue on with the project. So I know it's been a while, but I think we've finally have gotten there, and I'm glad you stuck through the process, and we can't wait for you eventually to move into that space and get it done and, you know. So let's just, let's just get it done. So, whereas the town board has introduced and has before a local law entitled, a local law to amend Town Code Chapter 158 entitled zoning by revising the zoning map to change the zoning designation of certain real property from suburban residence district one, SR1, to general commercial, GC, and add a definition of theater to the zoning code and to amend the use of bulk requirements to allow theaters in the GC zoning district. And whereas the following due notice, the town board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Whereas the said proposed local law has been duly referred to the county planning department under General Municipal Law subsection 239, and to the town planning board pursuant to provisions of the town code. And whereas the town planning board as lead agency has completed review of the proposed local law under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby adopts the above local law and that the said local law shall be published, posted, and filed in the office of the Secretary of State in all ways required by the applicable law. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Scott?
Before I go, yes, I just want to say, just going to all the readings, you have been probably one of the most professional, patient. If there were any issues, you always went back to the drawing board, and I really thank you because you really are a model for how the process works. And I know I really appreciate your patience and sticking, you know, sticking with it. So I'll go, yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes, best of luck.
Yes, good luck.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes, very happy.
Yes. All right, fantastic. So next, we have storm water regulations, local law. So what we have here, we're not actually going to pass this tonight, but we have the latest version, I'm sorry, not pass it, but introduce it. We have the latest version of the storm water regulations, local law. We've added in some different sections that have to do with water quality. We've also added in some stuff that are going to deal with the severity of different storm events. And what this law has to do with is when you, when you're doing commercial development on a property, and let's say you have like a SWIP, you basically have to design the storm water control, the erosion and sediment control measures to a higher standard. The DEC has a certain threshold, you know, level that is like bare minimum. We're looking to take that above the bare minimum to take into account some of these more, you know, let's just call them extreme weather. So, you know, if you look at, you know, one of the things we did here in the previous, you know, version that we have on the books, we didn't have a storm, a storm event, a 12-hour, 100-year storm where you get 7.12 inches over 12 hours. So we've now added that in there. You know, I asked about adding in like a thousand-year storm, but that's would have just made it too stringent if we, you know, like if everyone had to basically build to account for a thousand-year storm, that would just be an insane amount, you'd probably never be able to build on a property. I mean, certainly if we keep having thousand-year storms over here, then we can, you know, go back and look at that. But I think for now, we're settling on, you know, the 12-hour, 100-year storm. There's also a section in here, if you look on the second page of this, number five, subsection O, or was it O or zero? You basically, we, we're going to ask the planning board to come up with enhanced erosion and sediment control standards. And so when we introduce this, Dominic is then going to take back to the planning board and they're going to work on coming up with what, you know, what are the right standards for the town of Cornwall? Is there going to be the ones that are going to have to deal with it? And so that was sort of how, instead of like the town board working out all of those details, we're going to let the planning board and its consultants work out those details with the mind that we want stronger standards. So that, that was one piece of this. What else is in here? I think I've quoted everything here, but I mean, look, certainly this is just, this is the most recent version. This, my hope is to, you know, take a look at this. I would like to introduce this at the first meeting in September so we can start the process and schedule a public hearing. But this is, you know, right now, this is the version that I'd like to introduce, so take a.
This is just applied to just commercial development?
Yes.
If there's any kind of subdivisions, are we looking at?
It would apply to subdivisions as well.
Okay, I was just.
Correct. It actually, it actually applies to an acre or more disturbance.
Which is what a SWIP, so anytime you have an acre or more, you have to do a SWIP. So this basically applies to anything you have to do with SWIP.
Okay, so maybe any basically parcel.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, but the overall disturbance has to be an acre.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. It's not, it's not that the parcel is an acre, it's just that the amount of ground here.
Excavating an acre or more.
Correct.
I understand that. Thank you.
So we're coming back to this in September first, second week?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the goal is going to be, I mean, certainly, think about it, talk to Sean, whatever you got to do about it. But basically, we basically went around the county and looked at, you know, Goshen, Montgomery, and some other municipalities to put this into place. And we're basically, they've all upgraded theirs to deal with.
Yeah, because they've had some issues.
So basically, we're looking to sort of, you know, before we had issues, to put something in place. So next, I have the, a updated version of the tree preservation law. We're also not introducing this. The plan is to introduce this at the first meeting in September. But I think you'll all be pleased to hear that if you go to, let me, I'm sorry, here, let me, I'm going to want one here, but if you go to, we took out the part that applied, which made this applicable to, you know, lots that have single-family residences on them. So if you go to page seven, I'm not sure if it, if you go to page seven, we, if you go into regulated activities, we took out, it basically reads now, this chapter does not apply to any lot approved with a single-family residence, actively managed scientific research forest, that's Black Rock Forest, certain commercial activities such as tree farms, we have a tree farm, right? Lots where there's agricultural activity, we have lots of agricultural activity in the town of Cornwall. And so that, we think that pretty much handles a lot of it, a lot of the, you know, complaint, not complaints, just concerns that residents had. And then obviously, we continued with the no penalty shall be imposed if you're moving invasive plants or hazardous trees. And then obviously, the one thing you do have to leave in here, because we do have a clearing and grading permit, which still like remains in place, that still has to be in place, so that, you know, there's going to be times when the clearing and grading permit is going to prevail because maybe it has stricter standards than this. So that, that we actually can't de-get, must be what, get rid of the clearing and grading?
Yeah, I mean, the clearing and grading, once again, applies if there's disturbances in most cases that are in excess of one acre. You don't want to disturb that jurisdiction of the town.
Yeah.
In connection with the adoption of this law. So this would want to dovetail with that rather than conflict.
Yeah. So basically, I mean, look, I think we've, we've taken away the concern of the, I mean, unless, I mean, I think, you know, lots that have single-family, this, we basically took that off the table. So now it's just, I would say it's what, mostly applying to commercial now?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
If anyone that has a property that has a home on it, and they're just doing tree clearing without triggering any other elements, like they're not having more, more than one acre of land disturbance, say. And that's a lot of disturbance, actually, so when you think about it, you know, it's certainly far more than putting in a pool or even taking down some trees that might be undesirable for whatever reason.
Yeah.
This would exempt anyone who has a single-family home on a property from having to comply and going through the process of getting permission to remove trees on their property.
And look, certainly if, if the board in the future sees that there's issues or for some reason we have to go back and change it, I guess we have to do, do something. We can certainly, we have the authority to do that, but I think a good place to start is with, you know, the, what's in here and, you know, particularly focusing on commercial. So I think, I think we've got it, I hope we have it right now, you know, but.
Also, also does, in other words, it's, it does not prevent homeowners to do maintenance on their property?
No.
So it's basically, you can do whatever you want as long as.
Unless you're going to clear an acre, disturb an acre of land on your five acre, then you would.
So I know many people misunderstood the concept.
But if you're just doing basic things like a pool or an addition or whatever, as long as you're not getting to the acre of disturbance, it's pretty much good. Yeah.
Will the building inspector perhaps be able to, because I know there were some concerns in terms of the language and enforcement because I think, you know, you can, we can write a law or a ordinance, but it has to be something that has to be enforceable.
May I add, may I? Carla has met with building inspector, and they are in touch with every line in there, so they are well informed.
Their main concern was having this applied to residential parcels. Right now, this is mostly applying to stuff that comes before the planning board, which they'd have to be involved with anyway. So, I mean, I think, I mean, look, I'm happy to have them, you know, look at it again, but, I mean, their main concern was the residential component because that would have added in potentially hundreds of incidences a year where they'd have to be involved versus commercial.
There's a lot of parcels that would.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, I was, I was in that meeting while you were on vacation, and John Han and Gary were both there. And my reading, it appears that their concerns have been addressed.
Sure, I'll confirm that, because I've heard I've had some recent discussions, and I just wanted to make sure because they're the ones that are in the front row, and they have to do enforcement.
Sure. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution for Mine Hill Road emergency work. So you may recall last week, the highway superintendent, he basically asked us, you know, he'd wanted to go ahead with, you know, a certain amount of emergency work on Mine Hill Road that's going to involve a lot of paving and somewhat, you know, some stabilizing of the roads and some stuff with catch basins. It was determined that this needed to come back before the town board just authorized him to hire Lenny and Callahan to be able to do the work, and we're looking at, this is all going to be stuff that will be reimbursed by FEMA, but this is all work, we basically, like, we're under the time, you know, we have like a time crunch because we have to get this done before we get to winter, and hopefully before the next, like, 10-inch rainstorm. So otherwise, I mean, you know how bad that work is, it came out there recently. So this would basically allow us to contract with Lenny and Callahan to do the repairs. Whereas the town of Cornwall maintains a public roadway known as Mine Hill Road, whereas said public roadway sustained extensive damage during the recent severe rainstorm and flooding events experienced in the town, whereas the town's highway superintendent and engineering consultants have opined that the damaged condition of the roadway presents an imminent hazard to travel on public, that it is imperative to immediately repair the roadway to preserve the public health and safety. And whereas the town has secured a proposed agreement from Lenny and Callahan, Inc., for excavation incorporated, for immediate repair work to be done, a copy of which is attached here, too. And whereas pursuant to General Municipal Law subsection 103, when a public emergency arises out of an accident or an unforeseen occurrence affecting public buildings, public property, or the life, health, safety, or property of the inhabitants of the town which requires immediate action and which cannot await, which cannot await competitive bidding, the town may forego competitive bidding requirements on any contracts for goods and services necessary to address the emergency. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby finds that the damage to Mine Hill Road due to the unforeseen severe rainstorm and flooding events constitutes an emergency situation, allowing the town to forego competitive bidding on the necessary repair work pursuant to General Municipal Law subsection 103. That the town board hereby approves the aforementioned proposed agreement with Lenny and Callahan, Inc., for immediate repair work to be done to Mine Hill Road. And three, the town supervisor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documentation necessary to complete work under the set agreement. I get a motion to approve.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. So next up, I have a, you may recall, if you look at your package here, you've got, this is 2280 Route 9W parcel. So as was the case with, we've done this a couple times in the past. So basically, Mr. Perez, who's the owner of this property, he's seeking a zoning change request. But in similar fashion, I believe how we handled another parcel on Route 32, the property owner is going to have to go to the planning board, submit a planning board application, that then gets referred back to the town board, that introduces the local law, then goes back to the planning board for review, right? It's just, it's just the same process. But we have to set, but basically, we're going to let the planning board determine the escrow amount because this is, you know, essentially, he's applying to the planning board, and then the planning board would, would set the escrow amount, and then they would then pay out whatever the consultant's fees are on this. That, that's my understanding how we have to do this. We can't just, the town board just can't review this and pass it. It's got to move the planning board in the back to us, and then the planning board reviews it.
I mean, that, that would be the normal course of events.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Right, so the escrow is going to be right $5,000.
Well, no, the planning board sets that, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't even know we set the.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, if the planning board decides to set $5,000 because they think that that's what the review is going to take, and that's what we said, if they determine it to be a lower amount, they would set that amount. But I mean, we're not going to set the escrow for the planning board, I don't think.
Correct.
They have their own established escrow policies that we set when we did those escrow policies, the fee schedule last year.
Just, just refresh my mind, this is a couple, wasn't this the one where they were asking for money from another planning board project that were on to transit, is this the right one on the fund?
Yeah, so, so what he had asked for, he wanted, so he has the existing hotel project. We wanted to know if he could use funds for that project to pay for this, and the answer is no, he's got to set up his own separate escrow account for this separate project. So that's what we're going to be making him do.
So the planning board determines what amount is to be put in this escrow account for this particular project?
That's in the fee schedule that we approved last year.
Yeah, not so much the board itself, it's, it's in the schedule, and so.
I understand.
It comes to the building department.
In the, okay.
Correct.
And then I know people had, they were like, oh, what about, you know, state DOT? I mean, look, that's a separate thing. If state DOT doesn't want to do it, well, that's, that's not on us, that's on the, the property owner or DOT to get that.
The form, huh?
Yeah.
Correct.
So whereas the town of Cornwall has received a petition for a zoning change from EMP Holdings LLC in regard to 2280 Route 9W, Cornwall, New York, and whereas the town board wishes to refer the petition for the rezoning to the town's attorneys and engineering consultants for review and report, and whereas the applicant has requested that the cost of processing the petition for rezoning, including attorney's fees and engineering fees, be charged to the existing escrow account which the applicant has established with the town for review and proposed development of the applicant's property for the town to. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board approved the use of the escrow account for use of the payment of the cost of review by the town board in addition to cost of review by the planning board, including all costs, attorney's fees, and engineering fees. The town board refers to said application for a zoning change to the town's attorneys and engineering consultants for review and report. I get a motion to approve.
So moved. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. All right, so next up, we have the Stone Hollow Performance Bond. So if you look at the, the MAG Town Engineers Noel Press Court Dedication Deficiency List, you can see it's two pages long of different items that need to be done before the town would ever consider accepting the road, the lights, the sidewalks. You know, this does not include the village in this. They have their own bond with Noel Press, so that's something they got to do on their own. But it's a, it's a pretty extensive list. If you look at the amount, the, the original bond amount was just about $1.8 million. It was decreased to about $850,000 in 2017. So that's how much we're going to be calling in. Our hope is that after we do this, that they're just going to go and do the work without us actually having to go and do the work ourselves, and go through a public bidding process. But if they don't, then this would be the mechanism. We don't have, you know, I, you're going to ask a few questions?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Yeah. So, I mean, basically, we don't know what's going to happen. After we do this, we will then immediately reach out to them and say, look, we, you know, we've authorized, the town board has authorized calling in this bond, are you going to, you know, are you going to, do we have to go forward with this, or are you going to do the work?
Do we only ask them that question?
Steve has been reaching out to them, and we've not gotten an answer back, so we feel like.
Over what period of time?
Just trying to reach out to them for the past number of months, and the highway superintendent and the building department have been trying to reach out to them. I mean, you know, they won't even answer calls if they're, the folks that live in there.
So my concern is that if we call back the bond, it's going to be.
Yeah.
And the policy, but they're not answering back, do you think they're going to actually say, oh, okay, we could have gone and do the work now?
I mean, you know, look, then, I mean, we could not call it in, let it continue to degrade, leave the whole road, and I don't think that's an option. I mean, I think we have to.
I'm just looking at both sides.
No, 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 of course, I mean, but look, we're not actually, so here's the thing. We're, we're voting to authorize us to do that, but it doesn't mean we're doing it. It just means that we now have that ability to do it. So they now have a choice. They can, and generally what happens is, I don't know if Dominic has any experience with this, but generally, when you threaten to call in a bond, people all of a sudden become pretty responsive.
Yes, I mean, you know, there would be a notice that would be made to bonding company that tends to get people's attention, you know, and provides, but having the formal action taken by the town board would be helpful at this point because efforts to contact and request so far have not been fruitful.
Yeah, I believe, the project was, I believe they sold their last house sometime back in, what was it, 2022? And the, the development, I believe, was officially finished. So technically, we should have already, I guess, accepted this, but we're not going to because it's in this shape, so. So with, the board has no objections, I would say, you know, let's call on the bond, and then Steve will be getting a letter out, followed by a phone call. And he even mentioned something about sometimes the bonding company, you know, they won't even deal with the, with, you know, the developer, they'll just take care of the, take care of it themselves, so. So.
Basically, this is in our town engineers and our, our town attorney's hands at this point, let's be fair.
Yeah, no, I mean, so what's going to happen is, we're going to do this, and then we're going to then be able to go to Stone Hollow and say, look, you've not acted on this, we've called in the bond, you have x amount of time to come up with a plan to do this, or we're going to call on the bond, and we're going to bid out the work ourselves and complete the, but yeah, it'll, it'll be with. Last week, the engineer and the highway superintendent, they spent a couple hours walking through Noel Press, and that's how they came up to the list. They then went and they spoke to Gary in the building department, and then they went back to Steve, and then Steve felt comfortable that there was enough details here to, to do this, and then, yeah, but that's who's going to handle it going forward. Whereas Stone Hollow at Cornwall LLC undertook to develop certain real property as a residential subdivision known as Stone Hollow, FKA Willow Woods, and whereas in regard to the infrastructure improvements at said subdivision, including roadway, parking lot, drainage, and sewer, Stone Hollow at Cornwall LLC pulls through a performance bond from Fidelity and Deposit Company of Ireland. And whereas, as is set forth in the memorandum received from the town's engineering consultants, MAG Engineering, a copy of which is attached here, too, numerous deficiencies and incomplete work exist in the said infrastructure improvements. And whereas in regard to the water service infrastructure improvements at said subdivision, a bond was posted in favor of the village of Cornwall and Hudson for satisfactory completion of the same. Whereas it appears from communications received from the village that the said water service infrastructure improvements have not been satisfactorily completed. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby calls the said performance bond and directs the town supervisor, the town's attorneys, to make a claim on the said bond for completion of the outstanding infrastructure improvements at the said subdivision. And two, that the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documentation necessary to call the said bond and secure completion of the outstanding infrastructure improvements at the said subdivision. Three, that the town's efforts to secure completion of the site work by calling the said bond shall be undertaken in coordination with the village of Cornwall and Hudson to secure completion of the water service infrastructure improvements. Now, I get a motion. Uh, they get a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. So next up, um, we have the Continental Road Temporary Road Closure. So, um, we're not gonna act on this tonight, um, but basically, we have this situation where, do you know on Continental, it was that old, it was that, that old structure that must have been damaged in a flood that ultimately, I think it got condemned and then torn down, there's now a foundation sitting there. It's like the first house, maybe off the traffic circle on the left. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, last Friday, I got a call from the, uh, one of the contractors for this, his name is Andy Bell. And.
Who?
Uh, Andy Bell. And so, the, the property owner, he has contracted with the Herkimer County Bosse's to build a prefabricated house. And, in order to put this prefabricated, um, house onto this frame, or not frame, foundation, they need to bring in a crane. But, if you know where that spot is on Continental Road, there is no private property, there's really no safe place to put it, other, to put the crane other than on the roadway. So in order to basically drop this prefab onto the foundation, they have to bring in a crane that's big enough to lift the prefab house onto it, but that's gonna involve basically putting the crane in the middle of Continental for at least, uh, let's just say, half a day. Closing the road, um, you know, and so, uh, I spoke to the police chief about this, he has certain recommendations about traffic control and safety, because we're talking about, now that the Boulevard Bridge is closed, the only way in and out of there, after, if this is closed for half a day, is gonna be those turns on my dummy. You know, same way to get emergency services in and out too. And then you gotta worry about the, about the crane doing damage to the road, um, and so, that's something else we have to mitigate, and then, obviously, notification of the folks that live on the road. So, the original date that Andy Bell had wanted was, like, they wanted to do this next Wednesday, they told us on Friday, and they want this all arranged by, you know, so they can bring this in next Wednesday. And initially, now, initially, we were like, alright, so is there a way to make this work? But, I'm talking to the town attorney, and to the police chief, and to, really what needs to happen is, um, first, we need to, we're, uh, we need to establish an escrow of, because the engineer is gonna have to do some work to determine what size bond that we need to have to cover damage that the crane might do to the road and anything else. There may be some other, you know, um, cost that the town's gonna incur possibly from, you know, police or highway. But the thing is though, we can't not let him do this, we can't prevent him really, I mean, well, you know, eventually, we have to figure out a way to let him do this, but it's gotta be on our terms. So we're gonna set the terms on this, but I don't know, uh, but we don't know enough to set those terms tonight beyond maybe requiring a five thousand dollar escrow, and then turning this over to the engineer, and letting him work with the highway department to come up with the bonding requirements, and then figuring out the traffic control, allowing Andy and his client enough time to basically notify, and we have to determine how many people on Continental, is it gonna, I mean, think about it, well, um, you know, Iowa Creek is on Continental too. So we've gotta determine, yeah, so there's actually be quite a few people to notify, so there's no way, and I hate to say, I don't see how we get this done in time for him, for next week, this is unrealistic, and we're gonna really take all these things into account. What's that?
I was saying, you should get a little bit more lead time with it.
He, he, he called me on Friday.
No, not, not, I'm not saying you, I'm saying, if you're really gonna do something of this size.
Yeah.
Don't let them push you around.
He called me on Friday, so we're, we're, um, so what I'd like to do tonight is have the town board, um, set an escrow in the amount of five thousand dollars to basically cover the engineering and any town expenses related to this project.
Is that enough money?
Well, well, it's, it's enough for the engineer to determine what the bond's gonna be, and.
I, I, I think so, at least for initial amount, and it always could be replenished if it, if it falls below that.
The bond's gonna be something different, that's gonna be, it's something different, he's gonna have to get us a bond to get us a certificate for the bond.
For the list of conditions that the board should consider to allow the closure of Continental Road is not before you yet.
Okay.
So this would just be the escrow to start the process to identify.
Do we get to determine what those issues are?
What things are being necessary.
It's an engineering, so see if the road was capable of pulsing or anything.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. So. So if I could get a motion to approve sending an escrow of five thousand dollars to cover the town's engineering and other costs related to determining, you know, how we can move forward with the, you know, terms and conditions of allowing this to go forward.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Before we get to the, to the, um, to the next item, I did get an email today from Maureen Spalding. They had a soccer camp scheduled for, um, for Christine Babcock Park, and I guess it got reamed out, so they've now asked if they could have their soccer camp over at Laurel Crest this week. The, the cross is there on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, but she's been in touch with Gabe, the Cornwall Cross, to work it out so that they can share the field on those nights, but they basically asked if we could authorize them to use Laurel Crest for a one-week soccer game this week.
And when does it start this?
That, that, it starts, yeah, this week.
I didn't see why not, as, 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 they have insurance, they.
Yeah, they, they have everything, she contacted me this morning, and, and, I mean, there's no way to, so if I could get a motion to authorize, uh, Cornwall United Soccer to use Laurel Crest Park for this week, which is.
Some, was it from?
Basically from today, so.
No, no, I'm just saying the time was.
I'm sorry, it would be four, it would be, um, four to seven P M.
Okay, and, and that's not gonna, like, they've worked it out, what they're calling.
Yep, they're, they're in touch, in fact, they were back and forth this evening and working on it, so.
I think since when?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Okay, so next I have, um, you may recall, we interviewed Katie Stone Wallace to be, uh, to be appointed to the C C A C, and, um, I'd like to move to appoint her to the C C A C tonight, if the board is integrating with that. Yeah, I get a motion, sorry.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ozzy?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so, it's like that's as far as, um, it's like we've got, um, committee reports, unless the board members have anything else? No? Okay, so, why don't we start with, uh, Tim?
I'm just gonna do, uh, wastewater, so wastewater maintenance, uh, foot cuts, basic stuff, cleaning, skinning, exercise all pumps and valves, uh, do secondary slugs, remove all nikes and stuff that, uh, as far as, uh, there's a call out after hours of B D tears at the pump station, the alarm's going off. That was at seven, July fifth, one twenty-two, oh, the pump was at a hundred twenty-two degrees, pump station, so kind of overheating for some reason. Uh, alarms were called out for three point four inches of rain, under that massive rainstorm. And storm cleanup was tanned, improvised. During that storm, though, the operation of the, the plants actually went pretty well, uh, so the influence of the sewage flow was only, uh, point one zero six, and limiters were point one, uh, two. B O D, uh, was, was two, and again, the threshold thirty. Total suspended silence was, uh, two point five, again, the threshold is thirty. So, the both are, sewage plants actually operated pretty well during that storm. For the shore road, same thing, they cleaned out an order of the blade, the lags, uh, I guess they had to install an alarm for a muffler master, grinder, uh, and screen, and cleaned out, uh, the dredge, or the, the water pump, excuse me, and, uh, pipe, uh, fixtures, and cleaned the trickle, trickle filters, that then were cleaned out because of, uh, post-implosion after the storm. Call out after hours for B V N pump station for flow alarm, like, due to our heavy rain tactic. And, uh, call out after hours of shore road, wastewater treatment plant alarm power trip, no reason. Uh, alarm called out for a massive rainstorm, uh, for all, all the pump stations after this B V N shore road, and, uh, clean with tanned on seven nine. Diet test Rose Hill Park, I know there's an issue at Rose Hill Park, can you get that?
Yeah, I mean, um, sure, so.
Uh, but anyway, the flow at, at the plant was, uh, even after the main storm, was still pretty good, one point six. Uh, again, uh, actually, uh, that was another, one point one six, so it was still just a little below the threshold. Uh, B O D was, uh, nine point three, that's way below, and total suspended silence was six. Otherwise, uh, we did have that issue with, uh, most of the property, we talked about that.
Yeah.
All right, now I'm gonna talk about one more thing.
Sure.
Okay, uh, I'm just gonna talk about the men's pond a little bit, real quick. One thing I wanna talk about men's ponds, uh, first, I wanna thank all the people out there that are listening, and all our people of U N S, uh, for all of the input. A lot of great input, take it all in, uh, there's a lot of people that are very concerned about the pond and wanna help out, deeply appreciate it, I deeply appreciate the offers of monetary assistance. So, we're, we're hoping to have some good news, hopefully next week, end of next week, for assistance on that, for grant, uh, to get the pond, uh, drugs for, uh, Plan A, and then Plan B is, is, uh, some phenomenal input from, uh, all the residents throughout the town and village, uh, which we're gonna incorporate in Plan B, uh, which is basically the, uh, the, the long-term maintenance of the pond to keep the oxygen free and then keep it flowing for many generations to, uh, enjoy for years to come. Uh, so, again, thank you very much, uh, I hope to have some, uh, real good news, uh, with an upcoming meeting. That's it.
Roger?
Um, I'm, um, starting with the most recent one, music in the park is gonna be extended an extra Sunday, um, September third, and the new time going forward, starting this coming Sunday, is six to seven thirty instead of six thirty to eight, and see, because it gets dark. Uh, our last session is gonna be performed by a very gracious Mr. Mark Henderson, who has been helping us with, uh, organizing and contacting all the, uh, musicians, we're very grateful to have him, and he's gonna be performing the, on September third, so I hope everyone will, uh, come to support. Um, from the Cornwall Youth Committee, um, the signature event, which is Color Bash, is scheduled to be on October first, and we do, I believe, we do need permission for that, and the, uh, that's what I was told, so I'm not sure if the permission is from the police, uh, station.
So what I would say is that, I mean, it is a, it is a rec department event, but it is a big event. It is gonna be happening entirely on, um, Riverlight Park, I believe, around.
Correct, it's not gonna be on any streets.
But, you know, but because of the size and the amount of people, certainly, let's have the youth committee, um, fill out, I guess, a special event form, as though, you know, just so they can give the details to the town board, I guess, you know, until we get that, you know, the form figured out.
Could you probably tell me, because they asked me to call the previous night?
Yeah, yeah, obviously, they would be under the town's insurance, because it's a town.
Sure.
Um, and then I'd love to talk to the, to Chief Geppert about any police control and, you know.
Um, their upcoming, uh, event is this Friday, actually with a partnership with Movies and Hudson, uh, being held at the Downey Park, um, August eighteenth at six P M, and they're gonna be, they're very excited, I'm gonna be there with my priority outfit, and, and, so, I know, I'm encouraging Tim to wear his, these are the jet uniforms, by the way. Anyhow, let's see what else I have here. Oh, um, they will, there are a few other, um, their presence is gonna be at spectacular Winter Fest, and this year, they're gonna be hosting kids' ball drop on the New Year's Eve, again, with, in the partnership with the Ball Drop Committee, so they're, they're preparing for that. Um, the next meeting is gonna be, um, September, Thursday, September fourteenth at six P M. We are looking for a place to have this meeting, um, being held, because the mangakati unfortunately is not available that day, or that night. Um, let's see, what else is here? Cornwall Youth Committee is meeting with Cornwall's Special Events, um, this week to engage in planning for further partnership and cooperation, so they're gonna work together. From the Cornwall Youth Garden Club, a lot of good news is, I'll start with my number one favorite, um, they have developed a, actually, Cornwall Youth Garden Club compost song, which will, uh, with help of, uh, lovely Christine Walden, who I believe is sitting here in the audience, and they're gonna be recited and recorded tomorrow at the Farmers Market.
Have you heard?
Hello?
Seriously?
Yes.
I don't know this.
Okay. Well, we're getting a lot of people there, so, uh, we have collected so far hundred, they have collected so far a hundred and thirty pounds of compost this week, and, excuse me, last week, and we have collected a total of seven hundred compost, and the goal was, um, a half a ton, which is a thousand pounds, so we're gonna definitely exceed that. And, um, they're getting a lot of questions about, uh, what happens after Farmers Market is, the season is ending, where do people gonna bring their compost, and we're trying to figure out maybe a stand in the same place, so we're trying to sort that out.
Okay.
Uh, with the highway department as well. Um, for the schools, the Lee Road, um, Downey Park, with, they have, um, let me see, I don't remember, yes, they have harvested tomatoes, radishes, peppercorn from the community garden, a lot of volunteers have been coming, and this has been an absolutely, uh, huge success. And Lee Road, we have planted, uh, herbs, greens, and root vegetables for the upcoming fall months.
Okay.
So all good to that.
Thanks. Uh, Councilmember Scott?
First of all, I just have, um, the Moon Minut, Tridus, for Water Check Committee, uh, we were scheduled for July tenth, and, um, that meeting was canceled because there were people that were just unavailable, some of them are dis-scheduled, some of the things we're gonna try to update is what's going on with the embankment, uh, study, uh, to see, uh, what kind of data they have, uh, so far. Uh, the, um, I have no report from the, um, first cliff of water. The other thing is the, um, the Main Street communication committee, we met last Thursday, just as a very informal meeting to discuss what we were going to do, uh, in terms of fall planting, so, um, we are kinda come up and we wanna do, um, put those large, uh, those three trials back into, uh, the Triangle Park, uh, hopefully, they're not flooding, uh, but, um, there are wildflowers that have popped up, and I thank the Girl Scouts for actually coming, and, um, they, they wanted to come out and do that with, um, Katie, who is in our committee. So, we do the rest of the fall planting, and the senior advisory committee, um, we've met, um, July twenty-seventh. We are still trying to finalize, um, we wanna do some outings before it gets cold, either the Art Center, which we did before, and the seniors really did enjoy it, we were looking to go to West Point and do like a, um, just a tour of the district of that, so that was another thing we're working on, perhaps, um, November, um, and then, which is nice is they could actually be in the bus, and that the guide actually comes onto the bus and does the tour, so that's one of the ways they wanna use of the allocation that they would use to have, you know, have transportation down, um, and we can actually make it more available to more, uh, residents and, um, you know, of the community, so, um, definitely be working with recreation to make sure that, um, it works for them, uh, because, um, we do coordinate everything with them. The, um, the other thing that came up, and, um, they wanted to invite some elected officials, uh, just to come to a meeting and talk to them, and, uh, give them information regarding, uh, services for seniors. Unfortunately, one of the dates we came up with is the same day that they're doing the super senior, um, ceremony on the twenty-fourth of this month. So, um, we're gonna try to reschedule before, um, our state officials go, um, back to, um, into session. And then the last thing I just have is, um, the friendly visitor program, um, as you know, we are in contract with them, we did enhance with this, and, um, we were on track in terms of, uh, the value of volunteer hours, but one of the things that came to my attention, and you, you saw it as well, the training sessions are no longer online, they're. the training sessions are no longer online, they're, they're going in person, and that requires people to travel to Middletown, and, um, I did bring up to the, um, to the new director, uh, Nicolette Roncini, that, um, I would like to survey residents to see if the Zoom option does work for them, um, because we did have people coming for those trainings, and I don't wanna re-volunteer. I will make people aware of just one last thing, um, statistic. We have two seniors that are in need for everyone to volunteer, so, you really, you know, as a community, if you have the time to volunteer, and it might be just an hour of your time to take the senior shopping, or you're in a phone call, or to a, a doctor's appointment, uh, you do need to complete the training, but, um, I think this is a worthwhile investment, and I think it's worth everything that we've done so far. And that's it. Oh, Wes, I have a question for you, but I don't know why you're doing the report about the lighting?
Yes.
What's going on in terms of the lighting and the E V charging stations?
So, the E V charging stations, there's a kickoff meeting, remote scheduled for next, no, not next week, the last week in August.
May I get an invitation?
Yeah, absolutely, um, the, the, um, it's kept moving, like, they schedule it, and then it gets moved again, and it gets moved again. The street lighting is based on, the holdup has been that the Public Service Commission has taken the maximum amount of time to review the application.
Okay.
We were supposed to have had that released back to Central Hudson, um, back to the legal department, so we could schedule a closing, and we can actually acquire
Absolutely.
the lights, but the P S C is not released yet, it's still with them, so, we're now getting up to the point in time where they're gonna get to where they are gonna run out of time, and they just have to lose.
Like, we still have the, we have a lot of the materials that are here, will they ship to us?
Yeah, no, we have everything, it's all sitting in like, um, store, in, um, in, uh, what do you call it, like shipping containers, like a big shipping thing, a pot, yeah.
A pot, okay.
Nope, we have all the stuff, it's just a matter of, we can't start until we actually own it.
Alright, thank you.
So, um.
We're ready for, um, our, it's.
Yeah, Terry.
For the month of July, the Buildings Department issued thirty permits, twenty-six certificates of compliance, and three C O's. On-site inspections, thirty-six each, four complaints were investigated, ten fire inspections were performed, three signs were removed. They took in twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars in permit fees, and five thousand, two hundred dollars for municipal services, thirteen hundred. New planning board projects opened this month, zero, to the year-to-date, we have four. And there have been two new zoning board projects were opened this month, five, uh, year-to-date. Highway Department, the assisted sanitation with double pickups, vacations, and call-outs. Set up and breakdown for Fourth of July festivities, street sweep edges, roadway townwide, road mode town, right-ofways, townwide, rake algae, and remove from, apply, apply fifty-five gallons of liquid barley?
Yeah, barley extract.
Okay. Clean up after catastrophic rain events July ninth, July thirteenth, and July sixteenth. Good damage assessment, emergency repairs, and start permanent P D C repairs. One box culvert lost on Boulevard, one double-barreled culvert lost on Long Hill Road. Over ten miles of shoulder and asphalt erosion, five different embankment eruptions, putting Broadway, Continental Road, Minho Road, Deer Hill Road, and Old West Point Road at risk. Approximately twelve miles of open ditches that need to be cleaned out. Uh, hundreds of catch basins packed with sediment not allowing water to flow. Hundreds of feet of culvert pipe obstructed with rock sticks and sediment. Over fifty feet of guardware eroded and compromised. Six plus inches of water on first floor of Town Hall, submerging E V boilers and A C units. It was an exciting month.
It was. So, okay, so, um, let's just real quick, the, uh, the Police Department, um, seven hundred and thirty-eight calls for service, six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six miles driven. We had forty-eight traffic and appearance tickets issued, eleven parking tickets issued, twenty-seven motor vehicle accidents, five arrests, maybe, because a month for arrests, uh, relatively. We had one nine-one-one hang-up, twenty-seven alarm, fourteen ambulance requests, nine animal complaints, that seems a little higher, too. Or maybe, ah, is that unusual?
Seemed usual.
Yeah. Two burglaries, um, four criminal mischief, thirteen disabled vehicles, thirteen domestic incidents, five parking complaints, nine suspicious vehicles or persons, fourteen house checks, thirty assist other agencies. We had Officer, uh, Butler, he investigated a residential burglary on Jackson Avenue, and thanks to his thorough and tenacious investigation, Officer Butler developed a suspect and made an arrest within a week. So, I think that's a pretty, you know, pretty good, he just, he just started, I mean, we just, you know, appointed him, what, a couple months ago? So, uh, he's already making his present steps here. In terms of New Windsor Emergency Medical Services, um, Cornwall E M S for, let's see here, for, um, one hundred percent of the calls covered, busiest month in New Windsor E M S history, again, I'm like a big ask to that. Two hundred and eighty-three patients transported, we are now over, uh, twenty-nine hundred calls for the year, on track for forty-nine hundred calls in twenty-twenty-three. We had two hundred and eighty-nine in New Windsor, fifty-nine in Cornwall, twenty in the Village. We, uh, we've covered, uh, one call in Woodbury, three in Highland Falls. We've provided mutual aid, A L S standbys eighty-eight times. The average response time in New Windsor is, um, six point three four minutes, in Cornwall, it's five point five one, in Cornwall and Hudson, it's four point five seven. You know, I guess, just, you know, I'm sure many of you have probably heard around, you know, look, we've been having, you know, we had a medevac call, was it, maybe a couple weeks ago, and I just wanna say that, you know, every time we get one of these medevac calls, or you hear about something that happens to, you know, you know, to a family or a young person, and you're like, you know, thank God that we did this last year, because I think it's probably one of the most important things we've done as a board, you know, in the past couple of years, is to do, is to make the change, because I definitely think we've saved lives by having done this, so, I'm definitely thankful about that, so just, you know, wanted to call that out. Not gonna get into specifics over certain incidents, because that's not appropriate, but I could definitely say, knowing what I know, I think this is really a good decision.
Paid off.
Yeah, I definitely think it paid off, for sure. And then, uh, so, then just a couple other things here, um, give this out to y'all, this is, you may have heard about the governor, uh, there's this Wall Street Journal article where they found, um, lead-covered telecom wires, right, there was that one thing down in Wapakoners Falls, um, and then after that, I have to get some down, um, pretty much after that story came out, the governor then essentially sent a, uh, basically, I guess, an order to the state's two hundred and forty-six facilities-based communication providers, and they have, wanna say they have until maybe it's like the end of this week to get back, they have to submit to the P S C an inventory of all of their lead-covered telecom, uh, wires in the state, above ground, underground, underwater, whatever. Um, I took a look at it the other day, the ones that I'm most concerned about, like Verizon, Spectrum, um, Tidal Cable, and I guess Cable Vision, they haven't submitted it yet, because I ventured to guess that some of those wires that we have hanging in town probably belong to one of those firms. And so, once we get those, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look and see if we have any of those in the town of Cornwall, but I know from talking to, um, Kelly Turturro, who's the regional director for the D B C, she's, I, I reached out the other day and asked her about this, and she sent me an email back, and she was like, look, once we have the inventory, we're gonna work with municipalities to try to identify any areas that they might wanna test. Obviously, those would be over like playgrounds and schools, public property in certain areas, so, once they have that list, we'll certainly reach out, and we'll make some recommendations as to where, you know, they should look, but just wanted to let you know that that's, you know, going on. You know, everyone's complained about those lines on Main Street and elsewhere in the town, you know, you know, I, I don't know if we have any, you know, uh, lead contamination, but certainly, once we have that, you know, that inventory, we can look into it further, and then, I guess, we're from there.
Did you send that to school districts as well?
No, I, you know, I don't know what the school district is doing, this was a, uh, press release that basically went out, and I, I've done my own sort of research, the school district is a separate, you know, business.
No, I'm just curious.
But, um, certainly, once we get that list, I mean, I, you know, the second I have the list of, of what's in Cornwall, I mean, I'll, I'll send it to the school district. But, that's.
Thank you for following.
That's, that's that. Sandring Homestead, so, um, real quick on Sandring Homestead, so, um, you may recall, I guess it was the weekend of July fourth, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't mold and other, you know, basically, in the Sandring Homestead, and, and the second floor, whatever that is, that bedroom, or, or, so, we tested it. It wasn't toxic mold, but we did as precaution, sealed it off, and put in air scrubbers up there, but it looks like, because of the, pretty much the week after, you know, Ju- um, July fourth, we had the July ninth rainstorm, and then we had another four, five, you know, two, three, four-inch rain events. So, it looks like we have a problem, we don't know if it's the full roof, we don't know, I mean, I spoke to the Highway Superintendent today, he thinks maybe it's like, um, it's not the whole roof, maybe it's just like, uh, whenever we have like directional rain, with like wind and the rains going really heavy, it's getting under there. It may not be the whole roof, but we don't know, I mean, back in twenty sixteen, we paid a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to redo the whole roof, so that would be a pretty, like, you know, limited, you know, lifespan for a roof, I mean, even though it, it was used, you know, built using those older materials and methods, but still, it's not a long time for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar roof.
And usually, they come with warranty.
That's what we have to, yeah, um, check on, uh, but anyway, so, um, the, uh, the Highway Superintendent's not here tonight, but he is gathering, he's already got one quote, he's gathering two more.
Right.
At the meeting in September, we will, you know, see what, um, what it's gonna cost to do basic repair, to, you know, or if it's more extensive. Every year, we put somewhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in the budget for Sandring. Last, uh, this year, we have fifteen thousand, we've already spent three on various maintenance items, so we have about twelve thousand, six hundred dollars left. So, if it's a really extensive repair, we're gonna have to decide what it is that we wanna do as far as this year. Hopefully, it's a minor repair, it's something minor that can be done, it's not having to replace the whole roof, it's not, but we will, um, we'll wait and see what he comes back with for the September meeting.
Would it also be, um, in the long term, uh, be somehow, we could use it, the town could use it and, uh, make some revenue out of it? Because it's, it's just sitting there and costing the town a lot of money.
Well, what I was gonna say about, so.
I mean, it would be for historical, you know, events, it doesn't have to be, um, privately, for private functions.
So, when looking at this, um, I think if the town's gonna make any long-term substantial, you know, renovation or, uh, not even improvements, you know, but basically just restorations to this, we have to figure out a way to justify it, I mean, I think just paying and, and preserving it for the sake of preserving it, depending on the cost, you start to get into, unless you're using it more than you're using it, it gets hard to start justifying spending like, you know, three, four, five, six, you know, we don't know how much it's gonna cost, but it's, you know, but it is, you know, it's getting old, so at some point, we're gonna have to decide, you know, if we start getting into the hundred thousand dollars of repairs, you know, how do we pay for that? Is that, is that a, um, you know, there's certainly, there are grants that you can go after, but that's not a sure thing. I know when Randy was supervisor, I wanna, I wanna say they raised, what, ten or fifteen or twenty thousand dollars when they had that, that dinner, some motherfuck raising event, that they did, but then the town went out and basically just spent a hundred and twenty thousand of its own money to replace the roof, so certainly, we've gotta see the extent of the damage, but I did as a placeholder, um, I'm gonna put in, um, into the New York Forward application, a placeholder for maybe a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, but what the state's gonna tell me is, um, if we do this, we have to use it more than you're using, they're not just gonna see this, this grant is geared towards tourism, I mean, you can do preservation, but if you're preserving something, you're gonna have to open it up more, and it's gonna have to be used more, so if we're gonna do that, let's say that, that we greenlight that, and we, let's say we spend a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars fixing up Sandring Homestead, we're then gonna have to come up with, I mean, right now, it's used a handful of times. You know, we have school groups that go there, you open it up on the fourth, and you do it, we're gonna have to figure out a way to use it more. Otherwise, it's gonna be hard for the state, I think, or, or any grant, you know, grant-making organization to give money for. So, I think that, I'm gonna put this in there, and then, I would think that if the, you know, Sandring, um, trustees, and maybe the Historical Society, or maybe the, the town's storying, if they wanna get involved, and if we get this money and we fix this, I wanna figure out a way to use it for that it's currently being used, because I think then we could justify spending the money. But if we're not gonna use it, I think it's hard to, you know.
I think, once we, we know that we can use it, and what are the, uh, what, what can we use it for, there will be possibilities, it will be endless. I mean, it's an amazing location and a beautiful building.
So, I would think maybe working, you know, look, I'm gonna put the money in there, or, I'm gonna put this into the New York Forward grant, maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, we'll see where it comes out, but I think through this process, I, I would ask, and I'll certainly reach out, um, let's work with the Historical Society, let's work with Sandring trustees, come up with a plan. And if we come up with a plan, then, yeah, I think maybe, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to spend the money to, to, to keep it going, yeah.
But part of it's also the maintenance, because outside, I've noticed there, there's, you know, there are, there is some sagging, there's, you know, the paint peeling, like, I, we really do need, I know that we have a lot of facilities on town properties, but, um, you know, I think maintenance is important, so you're not dealing with such a large, um, fix.
I mean, I think in terms of the roof, I mean.
No, I'm just saying around it, because there are parts, you know, even like around the brick and the foundational part, there's the stone, there's some issues.
So, it may end up being that, and this is why we have to have a discussion come a bunch of time, you know, what's the yearly amount of money that we wanna put into this, you know? You know, and then who's, who can do it, I mean, this may be beyond the ability of our guys to do it, and so, maybe when we get these prices from the contractors that Tom is bidding, we can try to figure out what it's gonna cost for some kind of like yearly maintenance schedule, but we, you know, we have to, we have to, I mean, we tend to prioritize structures that are used on an everyday basis by a lot of people, and so, you know, unfortunately, we get to that one after we've done the stuff that we have to do, then we go and we check on it, and so, maybe it needs to be a situation where we've outsourced whatever we're doing for that to somebody else. I don't know, but we should certainly, and I know Tim's been the, you know, superintendent for the Buildings and Grounds, he had experience with this, um, you know, this is something we should take up, I got, having a depth conversation in September.
Definitely, I've got the conversation with Sandring Committee and the Historical Society. It's a historical building, and it is one of the hardest stuff that's been done the last time, two thousand and sixteen, with lots of historical contractors. Even the paint, I can't remember what they painted, but today, it's sealed, you don't wanna worry.
Right, right. But I also think that, we see if we can do this quickly getting, I know Tommy has, uh, told me he's going to reach out to, um, New Windsor, uh, D P W, and that, uh, they took with the Contoning Mayors and contractors, what I think, what, though, what means that, soon as we find out, if there is something we can, we do need to put some protection, because I can tell you, I've been in the building, and even on the bottom floor, there's sincere, there is evidence of the ceilings are actually leaking, too. So, this is going to turn into a larger problem, and we, we do need to, as quickly as we can.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, I mean, look, unfortunately, we lost, um, you know, a month, we just didn't prioritize it in July.
Yeah, the New York State Historical Society already come down and did a full inspection, and we tried about all, all the actual floor, 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 the beams, all actually sagged, the stuff, this is, this is kind of like normal, this.
No, no, no.
Because what I was considering, I was gonna collapse, and it's.
Yeah, but it, it's wet.
Well, I know, it's wet, yeah, there's a leak in the roof, so.
And I think that's why they're not in the building, because there was also concern about mold, even you don't wanna bring children in there for it.
Well, no, we, 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 we did mold testing, determined that it was not toxic, and then we sealed off the rooms that had, when we had the major storm on the ninth, and then it, it got worse from there. So, I think, I think September is, I mean, look, if we can get to it earlier, I mean, then the September, whatever day, is it September twelfth? We'll get to it, but I, I think that'll allow us time to, to get to it. But I guess in the meantime, let's, you know, I'll get something set up with, um, the other groups to talk about. Um, okay, so, we also have, um, I'm sure you may have seen the, over on Tory Lane, you may have seen the mural that I got painted on the back of the, uh, Montessori Schools, uh, on the back of that wall. Uh, it's this artist named Timothy Goodman, who's a pretty well-known, uh, muralist, um, and author, and he's also, you know, he's on all kinds of, like, merchandise, and, you know, I think, uh, uh, Uniqlo, I think he's, so, you know, pretty cool, if you haven't been by. If you haven't been by, definitely go check it out. I happen to think it's pretty cool. He did it in a day. Right, it's pretty amazing, isn't it? And then, let me see here, just another sort of thing here real quick. You know, we got a letter from Arlene Edlin, she lives over on Oak Street, so we now have, we have some residents that are over on Poplar Elm, Oak Hickory, Walnut and Chestnut. They're concerned about, you know, the drainage in their neighborhoods and I guess they're going around talking to neighbors, similar to how the Hasbrook folks did, you know, I guess a number of years ago when they were trying to get their drainage project. So, you know, look, I don't know if every home over there has flooding issues, certainly there, there are some issues where you have some, some, you know, drainage pipes and catch bases that don't really go anywhere. We have some that we don't even know about, this is according to Tom. So, so what we're going to do is, this lady, Arlene, is going around and she's talking to her neighbors, she's having to fill out this survey, I guess to get their experience, you know, how frequently does your property flood, have you had damages in the past, et cetera? I don't know where this is going to go, but, you know, she came to me and she asked, you know, what should I do about trying to get a better drainage system in our neighborhood? And I basically said to her, I was like, look, you know, we're concentrating right now on the Hasbrook, Robert Grove Sheldon project. If you want to get something started, you know, and I don't even know if it's a problem, but, you know, if you want to get this going, we can at least get feedback from, you know, from your neighbors. We can then go out there one day, maybe with the engineer and the highway superintendent just have a discussion. And if it looks like something that, you know, the town board wants to start exploring, we can, but they're at the very beginning of this, I'll give you, she just gave this to me today.
Yeah, this is a, but this is like a new build and if I recall, that area was always pretty wet. And I'm, I'm a guest, and I'm sure Councilwoman Michael Rosi, I, I think that neighborhood, as far as the fire companies and pumping, I don't think it's as frequent as other, at like in our, our neighborhood, but I, I think that actually they had some dreams that they didn't solve on, I know on Poplar they've done some dreams.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just sort of telling you, they, they've come to me, you know, I mean, I think the best thing we can do is before we dismiss them out of hand, let them go through their process, come back to us. We'll see what feedback we get from their, you know, look, if, if, you know, I, I spoke to some of them, you know, to one of them today, who has never had any flooding in their house. So I think we're going to get, we're going to get a survey and then we're going to find out, we can map it out where it is and then if it warrants going further, then we go further, if it doesn't, then it doesn't. Maybe that's, that's, and then obviously you know about, we have this room last week, we have the residents that are on Main Street, you know, Thomas and Jody Stein, and then about five different Main Street addresses that are looking for the town to put in a, you know, drainage easement of some kind. Well, this, this is dental excellence, this is, so they made this request to us. Obviously, you know, the town board has to decide, one if it wants to do it, then it would have to take, you know, drainage easements out on part of the property, so that, that's a whole other discussion. In the meantime, the county though has said that they would put, right now there's no catch basins on that part of Main Street, that's a county road.
Oh, Sandring to go on. I mean, this is a little bit stretched by now.
Yeah.
That's not a great, a much bigger stretch by now.
No, no, it's not a big stretch at all. So, you know, we're just, I mean, this is just. Yeah. So, let me see here, as far, as far as the New York Forward projects, those are due on the eighteenth. They got to be submitted by four o'clock on the eighteenth, so you've all seen the list that I gave you last week. The town's planner is still basically putting them together, I would have given you draft applications, but she's putting them all together. It's going to be according to, you know, pretty much the outline that I gave you. And like I said, those aren't final final, that's just sort of like, this is the broad idea and then there'll be opportunity to, to change those throughout the process. And then, let me see here, I guess, just one sort of change I'm going to make here to the supervisors committee appointments, I'm going to actually start, you know, I'm going to take over Main Street Parks and Famification as the liaison, so.
Were you going to talk to me at that professional level?
So I'm going to make.
Tell me that?
So I'm going to make that switch.
For what reason?
Just because I think that it needs to have the attention, there's a lot of stuff going on related to New York Forward and to some other projects and I need to work more directly with the committee as we pull that off, so I'm going to make that, that switch.
So you're, so I shouldn't participate in this group anymore?
Oh, no, you should definitely participate, but I'm going to be directly, I'm going to be directly involved now.
Okay, no, you didn't make that clear.
So no one is going to, nobody is now going to have this as a, as an assignment, it's just going to fall under mine, it's my assignments along with EDAC and the police.
I just think that it was very unprofessional to even do this, we should have spoken to you first.
So I'm going to do that.
Well, that's disrespectful.
Okay.
I'll let, I'll let the committee know too.
So, okay, so moving, is there any public comments? Yes?
Nancy Bryan, I just want to encourage the board to please make Sandring a priority. It certainly is such an important part of Cornwall and such an important part of Cornwall history. From what I understand, and I don't know whether this is true, I have not been inside, but there's a lot of inside damages as well that has happened because of this water. And I would just encourage you to pull out all the stops and get this fixed. And yes, let's use it for more things, but let's not forsake this gem and the history of this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So if I could get a motion to go into executive session to conduct interviews for the Board of Ethics?
Certainly.
A second.
Yes.
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 Yes.